We will call the meeting to order for the Wycomico County Council legislative session 2023, December 23, for December 5, 2023. Those who would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Leans, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into evil, but deliver us from evil. Thy mischievous sinners, the power and the glory of your name. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, which stands on a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda. Does it move?
Second.
Any discussion of corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Consent agenda has been approved unanimously. Good evening, Ms. Hurley. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first order of business this evening is the election of officers pursuant to Charter Section 303, which states, at its first meeting in December of each year, the council shall elect from among its members by a vote of the majority of the total number of council members established by this charter, a president and vice president. The president, or in his absence, the vice president, shall establish the agenda and preside at all meetings. On all questions before the council, the president and vice president shall have and may exercise the vote to which each is entitled as a council member. Tonight is the election of the president and vice president. We'll start with the nominations for president. Are there any nominations for president?
Nominate John Cannon for president.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, by acclamation, John Cannon will continue to serve as president. Congratulations, Mr. President. Would you like to ask for nominations on the vice president?
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Appreciate it. In regard to the election for vice president, are there any nominations for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Jeff Merritt.
Second. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Seeing none, that concludes the nominations for vice president. With there being no further nominations, I would declare Jeff Merritt, Vice President of the County Council, by acclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we will continue with business, right? Mr. Benson, good evening.
The county council, we're here tonight on legislative bill 2023-17, an act to amend Chapter 90 of the Wycomico County Code titled Tax Exemptions to Add a New Section 90-9, entitled Property Tax Credit for Volunteer Fire Department Members. It's here for a public hearing.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on legislative bill number 2023-17. If you'd like to make any comments in reference to this legislative bill, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This is in reference to the tax exemptions for the fire department members.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Hilton, Wycomico County. I am Wycomico County Volunteer Firefighter Association President, as well as Powell Volunteer Fire Department Association President. As I am thankful to say, it has took some time to get this bill brought here in front of everybody. I am thankful to see it. I do urge and strongly suggest that we continue through and pass this legislation. It will be one thing to help recruit and retain the volunteer firefighters in this county, and it will also help for the volunteers that do not purchase, have not purchased property in this county, to purchase property and stay in this county, to help secure the safety and well-being of all of Wycomico County residents. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and Julie. My name is Holly Ortell. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I'm the vice president of the Wycomico County Fire Association and an active member of the Pittsville Volunteer Fire Company. Yesterday, I, it was brought to my attention of an email that we got on the real tax credit bill, which I want to thank every council member up there for passing this. It's huge. It's going to be huge to recruit new firefighters over to the volunteer side, which we need In the email that I just passed out to you all, on page two, it says, "Volunteer Fire Department Member," a person who has been voted in and continues to be an active member of a volunteer fire company located in Wycomico County, including an emergency medical technician, and is not compensated for service as a firefighter or an EMT. So basically, some of the stations in Wycomico County, we have trouble staffing the medic 24/7, so we have to rely on the volunteers getting it out. And we, as one, we have the option that we can, if I take the medic out to get it out on the road, I have that option to fill out a slip of paper to where I can get paid $25 for the call. So what I'm reading here and understanding is that if I do such, then I am no longer able to get a tax credit. And I would ask that the verbiage be changed for that. If that's something that you all would, you know, talk about or think about doing, you know, we're here for the community to make sure our medics and engines get on the road no matter what. If somebody calls 911, they need help, and they need it now. Also, we, in this email, it's also showing that we are going to be taxed on the tax credit. I get what the IRS is saying, kind of. I haven't read everything, so my apologies for that. But if there's some way that you all could get together, write a letter to Andy Harris or to our senator down here, Mary Beth Carosa, so she can take, you know, so they can go to federal, the federal people. So we are not taxed on a tax credit. That's, I mean, to me, that's absolutely silly. Also, with the bill that Julie wants to bring forth for her budget of $2 million to Salisbury Fire Department, I totally disagree with that. You know, it, I know she's saying it's not going to hurt the volunteer sector, but down the road, it actually will. Salisbury, basically, from what I saw in the PAC 14 meeting, that Salisbury, the...
If I could, Ms. Campbell, I apologize. I'm going to give you more time to talk later.
Okay.
Because you can do that during public comments.
Sure.
At this time, I want to limit the public comments to this bill.
Okay.
But we really appreciate your input. Thank you very much, and we'll consider that when we get into discussion.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, council, executive. I'm Jay Disharun. I live in Wycomico County, been here my whole life. I'm president at Allen Volunteer Fire Company. We definitely want to say thank you to all the council members for getting this bill finally where it is. It's a fantastic start, and I agree with everybody that this is going to help, I think, as far as recruitment and retention, it's something that was definitely needed. So we are in support of it. I think there may be some things that need to be ironed out down the road, honed it a little bit, but definitely a good start, and we just want to say thank you to everybody. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Disharun. Any other comments in reference to this legislative bill? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on legislative bill 2023-17. I entertain a motion from council to approve legislative bill number 2023-17.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Cannon.
I think we could ask Ms. Olin to come forward and explain the IRS rules as they stand right now. And what she could do to change them.
Nothing. Sorry. I don't have that, any kind of that power. So I believe, I don't know if Laura passed it out to you, but I did forward to you, there is literally a Issues for Firefighters document on the IRS website. And in that document, the very last section of that document says, "State or Local Tax Benefits." In some cases, and I'm quoting from the IRS, "Volunteer firefighters receive benefits in the form of state or local tax credits or rebates. If these benefits are offered in return for services performed, their value represents income to the worker for federal tax purposes and should be included in taxable wages." We are offering a credit. We are offering them for their work because we're tying it to the form that they're showing that they have done work for the volunteer company. It is on the IRS website that we have to give them a 1099. It is taxable. It is a benefit that we are providing that the IRS has taken the time to spell out on their website. And with, I, I do not know the case law that went behind this, but again, they literally issued an opinion that basically says this has to be 1099. I don't, other counties may not. I am the finance director for Wycomico County. I follow IRS regulations. I don't know what other counties do. That is not my purview. That is not my responsibility. My responsibility is to give the county council and the executive the benefit of my wisdom and the information that I have, and that information is, is these are 1099. I understand they don't want to pay taxes on it, but here's the deal, is that if we're giving them a $1,500 credit and their tax rate is 20%, they're still getting about $1,200 that they would not have gotten otherwise. So they would have either paid us $1,500, or they're going to save $1,500 with us and pay something to the federal government. So that savings that they get on their tax bill to us, they should reserve some of that for when they get, when they file their taxes.
A waiver will be treated the same as a credit?
A waiver.
A waiver. Others, if the legislative bill, others, the legislative, intended legislative bill is to waive the...
It's still considered a credit.
Okay.
In the system.
It is?
Yeah.
By the government?
Yeah. It's a credit, a rebate. Yes, we're not cutting a check to them, but it has been listed as something that we are giving them a benefit for services performed.
This is kind of tees off what you're saying, but I was just wondering if, as a body, maybe we could send a letter to Harris's office asking him if they could look into this language on, on the national level and see if that, maybe they could, maybe they could waive that, you know, because it might be something that just hasn't been talked to or looked at in a long time, and things need to be updated. Now, I know we can't do anything about it right here, but, but they might be able to do something about it at the national level.
I would agree.
Has this been vetted through the state income tax?
I don't, I don't know the state rules. It would have, again, I have not found a document on the state's website. Doesn't mean there isn't one that exists, but I have not found one. But your, any 1099 that we issue, we supply to the federal government and to the state. So when you're doing your taxes, those, that information will be with the state. So it will be a conversation, if you use an accountant, if you don't use an accountant, but that information will be filed with the state.
And can you also address the issue about the firefighter being paid $25 for a response volunteer?
So this is, this is something I actually have personal experience with. My mom ran ambulance in my hometown area as a volunteer for years. I'm from Pennsylvania, but the rules of volunteering are you can't get paid by the same entity that you're volunteering at, because where's the line? She would get paid, she ran for another company and got paid. Our hometown company, she volunteered, and the two never met, and they couldn't meet. And those were the, those have been the rules as far as I have known them since the 80s, when my mom did this. So again, I can't volunteer where I get a paycheck, because I could then turn around and claim to the government, to the state or federal government, well, those hours that I volunteered, I got told I really had to do that. I want to be paid for everything. So there's the line, and the line is intended to actually protect the company from somebody coming back at a later date and saying, well, you paid me for this one, why didn't you pay me for everything? So the intention of that rule is to try to ask the companies to keep that line.
Josh?
I think my question's been answered, but I guess I was just, I was going to go back to the piece before, just on the authority from the state. We, the state did pass a bill that allowed us, or counties, to do this, right? I guess if there's, trying to get an understanding if the state has, if, I mean, I guess, you're not probably the one to answer that question, so I'm going to leave it alone there, but I think just if we get greater clarity on whether or not the state will be, you know, what taxes they may require from this, if at all, or if it's just only the federal side of things.
I think the state and federal government need to wake up. They don't see the need for those type, if the local municipalities are willing to make these type of credits, I think they, it's a drop in the bucket for them to also help us with that, to say the least. A letter, a letter, I think, was suggested, it'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to make a...
Well, we can do that in a couple minutes. We're in another, we're in another, under another motion.
Since apparently we're looking at this as a benefit and being taxed, so if it was reduced cost on health insurance, would that be taxed as well? Or does that take us off into a different?
Well, the difference is, is then I would actually be cutting a check to the person to cover their benefits.
Got you.
So it's still cash that I'm giving to them for a service performed. This, I'm not actually giving them cash, but I'm actually giving them something of value per IRS regulations.
Trying to figure out a way out of it.
John?
Yes, Shane?
I just want to give a suggestion. You know, we talk about contacting Andy Harris. We need to contact all the federal people that represent us in the state of Maryland. And also, if you have a National Association for Volunteer Fire Departments, I think you need to have them also send a letter, because there probably some of them in the same boat that you're in. That's what I would do. Get together and just contact whoever and, and address that issue with IRS.
In reference to the, the $25, and Shane was, talking to Shane earlier about it, and the idea came up that, and Mr. Benson, I don't know how you could opine on this, but what if we were to amend this legislative bill, so much so that we would define the small give and take with, to within $600, since that seems to be the ceiling for a 1099? Because normally you don't file a 1099 unless the person's made over 600, over $600.
Correct.
So if there's this $25 going out every time, I'm assuming that's probably not going to get to 6, but maybe we could amend this bill to say, as long as you file, fall within the regulations that do not require a 1099. In our legislation?
Yes. Here's, here's the slippery slope of that. Again, it's the slippery slope is that we're condoning volunteers to get paid by the same company that they're volunteering. By changing that rule, changing that law, part of the law, we are condoning them to get paid. Again...
Kind of reminds me of the Olympic gold medal.
But when you and I spoke earlier, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you said you believed it to be okay if they get paid at another fire department.
So if they are, yes. So again, in the example of, of my family, she worked at the neighboring fire district. So if these people could, again, if you could get coverage from a volunteer next door, then you could, then you could cover, so a, and I'm going to show my inability to sometimes remember who's next to who. Sorry. But, you know, Powellville and Pittsfield, a Pittsfield volunteer could get paid in Powellville. A Powellville volunteer could get paid in Pittsfield. Yes, that's not their home district. That's not, but you can do that. Again, and with mutual aid agreements, you could end up back in your own district because you, as a Powellville volunteer, are working at Pittsfield, and you're going to cover a call in Powellville. That's how mutual aid works, and so, yeah, you may actually be back in the area, but you're not getting paid by the entity that's having you volunteer.
Chief Hilton, you are, since you are in your position, we would certainly entertain having you engage in part of this discussion. If you have any comments you'd like to make, you can always use insight from the organizations involved.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. One is, my, my statement for some of this is the property tax, 1099, we receive a tax credit from the state of Maryland every year, for those of us that receive our LOSAT points. This year and last year was $7,000. We are not 1099'd on that, and if was going by this IRS statute that Pam has found, we should be receiving that. The state does not 1099 any of us.
I can't control what the state does.
And that is a, so there's got to be a way around this, because if the state isn't doing it...
Are you only deducting it, though, are you only getting the credit on your state taxes?
It is a state tax credit.
Right. But so then on your federal return, so you do your federal, in the state of Maryland, you do your, your federal return first.
Then is there a way to, we do them all at the same time. I turn it all in.
I understand, but can I, can I finish my statement? The Maryland state tax return, you do your federal return, and then you put your AGI into your state return. That AGI from your federal number then gets adjusted by state credits. That, so you have been, you did not get a credit on your federal return for the $7,000. You got a credit on your state return, but not your federal return.
What I'm saying is, if that's the case, we would receive a 1099 after that for the following year to put against the federal taxes where we...
No, because you already paid it on the federal taxes. You didn't ever, you never got a credit on the federal side. You, you only got a credit on the state side, so the state's not going to give you a 1099 for something that they've given you a credit for that the federal government has never seen.
Then I guess, there's got to be a way around it if other counties in the state are not taxing their firefighters.
What I would like to suggest here, we can't, we can't, we can't address that in this legislation.
I understand.
That will be something that we need to discuss with our state representative and our federal rate.
I agree.
So we can move forward, I think, with this legislation without having to clarify this tonight, if I'm not mistaken, as far as the taxes of the, of the total credits.
And now I'd like to clarify a little bit on this $25.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's something I think we may be able to adjust here.
So what happens is, is that $25 is $25 per call that some stations do give their members, and it's not in the form of cash, it's usually a form of a gift card. And that is, so they take call to make certain the ambulance gets out at night.
Usually or always is?
Not always. It usually is. Sometimes it is cash, sometimes it's not. But what the, this is done for, and I understand Pam's theory about using mutual aid neighbors, so as for her example, I'll use Pittsfield and Willards since they're closer. The, the time for a Willard member to leave his home to get to the Pittsfield, the call will have already left Pittsfield's district and gone to another station. So for the time, response times, that's why it's done, in your house, in your district. Because if you go outside of your district, your company loses the call. It goes to the next due company.
Most paramedics in Wycomico County work out of their fire, their volunteer station?
Yeah. Most, most paramedics do not.
Never, usually?
You will have...
So we don't have to worry about this affecting a paramedic?
No.
Working at their fire?
Yes. This isn't, this isn't for a paid personnel, and that's what a, most of our paramedics are, paid personnel in the county.
I know it's not for a paid personnel, this bill.
Our volunteers, our volunteer paramedics may work out of our station, but they don't get paid for a call they're doing on the volunteer time. If they're on the, if they were on the clock, it's totally separate. It's run completely different.
But they may be excluded from this bill if they're a volunteer at Powellville and they fill a shift at Powellville, paid shift, then they would be excluded from this benefit, correct?
That's the way it's currently written, yes.
I'm bringing that up because that's something...
There is one paramedic, there is one paramedic that is a paramedic at my station. He is a paid employee of the station, but his, he volunteers separately because he's a paid employee and he's also a volunteer.
Some of these...
He doesn't get paid for his, he doesn't get paid for his volunteer time. He only gets paid for the time he is an employee, and he doesn't have the same abilities as a volunteer does.
The way I understood Pam to say, you really can't differentiate.
It is not a recommended, it is not a recommended practice to have somebody be paid at the same place they volunteer.
Then if that's the case, you probably will have several paramedics lose jobs, or you're going to lose volunteers in Wycomico County.
That's why I brought this up.
That is what's going to happen. That's what will happen.
I was going to suggest, as regarded the $25 thing, just not to get down the other rabbit hole, but the $25 thing, could it be a gift, like as in a gift card? Is that, would that be acceptable? Like the station gave a gift for somebody, you know, you can get gifted things?
I don't think so.
I don't know. I don't think so either. I'm just...
You know, we follow, we follow two criteria. One is what we do at this table and what we put in the legislative bill. The other part of this legislative bill depends on establishing the eligibility of a volunteer based on what guidelines the fire department gives us, right?
Correct.
So either we would amend this legislative bill to, in regard to a 1099, if it's less than $600, if a 1099 is not filed, then that is not money that has not been considered a differentiation between professional volunteer, period, if it's less than $600, which we could implement in the legislative bill. Either that, or the fire departments, in your guidelines on establishing a volunteer and the 50 hours, et cetera, et cetera, you could also possibly amend that to state that a volunteer maintains their status as a volunteer as long as they do not go above the $600 threshold.
Yes, that could be amended at some point, yes.
Can you amend that in your documents?
Well, our document doesn't have any room for that.
Or is that...
What the document we have is a, is our points document. It tells you how you accrue your points.
So...
And our, that guideline is handed down to us from the state association, from Maryland State Firefighters Association.
Yeah, and it might be a little more difficult for the, I don't know, I mean, it could be a little... could be a little more difficult for us to try to appeal to the state to amend that.
Because that would amend it for the whole state.
Yeah.
That would change everything for everybody.
I mean, I think it would be a fair thing to say, hey.
Ultimately, C3 is a recommendation that I made, in the fact that it is trying to protect the volunteer companies from someone claiming I should have been paid for it all. That is ultimately council's decision as to whether or not C3 needs to be in there. We will, the, the point system does not tell me that. It is a recommendation that I, I believe I'm the one who recommended three go in there, I believe. I don't remember for sure, but I.
Well, so then, I would say then we would make the amendment to, to eliminate C3. Just, but I would, seriously.
I was going to second it.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say we would make an amendment to, to amend C3 so that it actually says a volunteer maintains their status as long as they remain under the $600 limit as required by a 1099 miscellaneous. However the jargon has to be, we may have to fine tune that later through legal.
I just think C3 is just way too restrictive.
So we could, we could amend it to the 600, sort of reverse, keep the intent, but sort of allow us a little more leeway.
Would you say, John, that $600 is a rarity of a volunteer to get to that point?
To be honest, since my department doesn't do this, I don't, my honest statement is, I don't know. Because there are some members that, some members may, but $600 would compensate about 2,400 calls.
Twenty-four.
So I don't think that would be, I think the 600 would be reasonable to go with.
Campbell, you have an opinion on that?
Yes, so I have received the $25, and it's, I don't do that for every call, because I am a volunteer. I have never exceeded the five, I think we have it at $500 at our station, that you cannot exceed that. So I don't know any member, you know, we just can't, they, they will, you know, you'll stop getting paid, the slips that are put in.
Thank you. Mr. Benson, you had a comment?
When, when, this was originally drafted, section C3 was not in, it was added. I understood it was added to address a situation where you had a paid paramedic in a particular fire district, and they also acted as a volunteer in that same.
Sounds like they actually have people that do that.
Well, I thought that's what it was intended to address. I don't think anybody was thinking about a $25 fee or was aware that there were $25 payments made occasionally.
If there are truly people that are getting a full salary and getting the points at the same location, that's a concern.
If we mentioned the 1099 on a $600 maximum, I think that would still, still cover.
Well, but what.
That's going to, that's still going to have some, some major affect.
He said, it sounds like they have paramedics that run in the same, they get paid in the same district that they volunteer.
If you have a full-time paid paramedic, it's, it's not falling under the, you know, the guidelines of what.
He's not a, he's a full-time paramedic, but he only works part-time for us.
Does he get points when he works for you?
No. When he's working, he is strictly off the books for any volunteer's parts. It is strictly what he is paid to do. When he is not on the clock, it is all volunteer. And it is very well kept, because we purposely keep those separate.
And many of them travel, right?
Yes, and a lot of them try, do multiple stations.
Well, I'd say we can do what we can do tonight with this bill to get it passed for, let's say, 95% of the firefighters.
I mean, again, the, honestly, if you want to avoid the situation that John is talking about, you would literally, there's no $600 limit, you would have to eliminate three.
She is correct.
I'm feeling that we should eliminate C3, because I don't like the idea of a paid paramedic that volunteers at a fire station. You know, I kind of, I kind of think that they should get the credit. They're still a volunteer, they're still getting their points. And if they get their volunteer points, why should they be discredited from being a volunteer because their career choice is a paid paramedic?
That's a really good point.
Again, this is, this was brought up, and I'm pretty sure I'm the one who brought it up, it's been a while that we have been working on this. I brought it up for the very reason that I talked about at the beginning, is that it should not be something that is done. But if the council does not want this in here, that is your prerogative.
Yeah, I mean, that makes a really good point, because you, you would have to say, well, you know, you're earning a living as a paramedic and you're being penalized, and yet you could be, you know, you're earning your living as a deputy, you could be, you're not getting penalized as a volunteer.
Right.
So, yeah, so, thank you, Pam. I guess that was what we would be looking for, really, as opposed to worrying about the 600 minimum, we would probably want to just make an amendment to strike number three.
But we do appreciate it.
We recognize the intent, yeah.
Information.
I'll make that motion, will you?
There's one comment, yes, Campbell.
So what, what I wanted to just throw in there, you know, volunteerism is a dying breed. I've been a volunteer for a little over 40 years, not down here, only three, two and a half years down here, and the rest on the other side of the bridge. So I've watched it just dwindle. You have people that if you say, okay, if you get paid $1, then you are no longer eligible for a tax credit. If you come out and you sign your slip to get paid $25 or however much other stations pay, to make sure that medic gets on the road to somebody that has, is having an emergency, they're going to say, you know what, we want our tax credit, so we're not going to get out of bed in the middle of the night and respond. And then you have, then dispatch has to hit the other tones to the other station, and so on and so forth. You know, I, I, I hope sincerely that y'all will either get rid of, what is it, C3?
C3.
Or completely reword it to the $600, I believe it was you, Shane, that was saying, because it's, it's not fair. It, I mean, you know, I have, we have a passion, every one of the volunteers that I know, that I've talked to, we have a strong passion, we love to help people, we're here for the community, and for us to be penalized because of maybe getting paid to get a medic at the door for an emergency, that's just silly, in my, in my eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Josh?
Make a motion to strike C3.
Motion second. All right. Any other further discussion? Pam, thank you for that, for bringing that to our attention. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, amendment passes. Any other discussions? Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we write a letter to Anna Harrison.
That wouldn't be relevant to the legislative bill. Hang on, we're going to fit that in somewhere.
I'm going to second it when you're ready, when you're ready.
We'll get it.
I just don't want to forget.
I guess there's a consensus, you can say, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
I made the motion.
All the state and federal?
Yeah, I, well, let's just hit them all.
Okay. Consensus, do they have a consensus?
I second to hit them all.
Okay. Do we have a consensus down here? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Right, let's continue on. Any other, any other questions or business in relation to the current legislative, legislative bill? All right. Hang on a second, let me get back to where I was. Oh, God. How about that? So seeing none, all those in favor of legislative bill 2023-17 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, legislative bill 2023-17 passes unanimously, as amended passes unanimously. I'd like to thank, yes, what?
Roll call.
Roll call, you always hit me with this roll call.
All the time.
So we'll take a roll call. Joe?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Chaney?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the legislative bill 2023-17 passes unanimously by roll call. Like to thank Vice President Baker and Councilman Merritt for their initiatives as far as getting this on the table, seriously, getting this on the table, as well as the volunteers, a lot of the volunteers who helped, and the three individuals who spoke tonight, and Chief Twilley also, who, who helped us with a lot of the information, so that's good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Pam, we really appreciate it.
Thanks, Pam.
Yeah, John, John, I helped a little bit, too.
James, thank you, James.
Yes, James helped, too.
Anything else, Bob? Okay, thank you. Ms. Hurley, good evening.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, resolution 165-2023. This is to approve the agreement with Maple Dam Conservation LLC to purchase non-title mitigation bank credits for the Pirates War of Development for a total price of $9,690. We have Mr. Chuck Russo here, Deputy Director of Recreation and Parks and Tourism.
Now we open the floor for a public hearing on resolution number 165-2023. If you'd like to make any comments in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on resolution number 165-2023. Undertain a motion from council to approve resolution 165-2023.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 165-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Next is a public hearing, resolution number 166-2023. This is to amend the fiscal year 2024 capital budget to utilize grant funds from the state of Maryland for the purchase of security door upgrades for the Circuit Court for Wacomiko County, Maryland, and to approve a memorandum of understanding for security goods and services between the administrative office of the courts and the Circuit Court for Wacomiko County, Maryland, and Wacomiko County. And we have Mrs. Melissa Leahy here, Circuit Court Administrator.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. This time we open the floor for public hearing on resolution number 166-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, state your name, county residence, and your concerns. Okay, that concludes the public hearing on resolution 166-2023. Undertain a motion to approve resolution 166-2023.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Ms. Leahy, did you have anything you wanted to comment? Did you have any comments you wanted to make?
No, I don't think you, these are additional security funds to continue.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor of resolution 166-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next on the agenda is an update from our county executive.
Thank you, Hurley. Good evening, Madam Executive.
Good evening, how are you all?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. Thank you to those who sent their questions in and comments, so I figured I would tackle those topics first and then kind of give you an update from where we are. So the first question or topic was an update on recycling. I'm assuming it was, wondering if those, is it based on the two, I don't know who asked it, was it based on the two locations? But the good news is, we still recycle, but we are not planning on bringing back the two recycling centers that we closed. So we still have 15 recycling centers, which surpasses all of our surrounding counties. So anytime anybody has called, we have directed them to the next closest one, and we have explained why those two specific locations were closed. And once we do that explanation, residents seem to be okay. So we haven't really heard too much, I don't know if you guys are still hearing complaints. Our office has definitely died down on that, so, do you want to add anything?
I think you covered it.
Okay. All right.
What was the reason, it seemed there were two, two differing explanations on the recycling being removed. What was the, the final understanding as to why they were removed?
So both were really abused. So the first one at the Civic Center, and actually, Steve is actually here, he was here. He knew it, he knew I was going to bring him up here. But the one at the Civic Center was causing a huge issue. There was a lot of dumping mattresses, couches, people just, you know, abusing it. And what happens is, when anybody dumps trash or food waste into the recycling, it completely makes it that nothing can be recycled. The Civic Center is very difficult because of the amount of trash. What was happening is that not only were the guys not able to get to it to clean it, which was taking an extra hour or two for our recycling guys going around and picking up the recycling, it was, the parking lot was covered in trash. So our Civic Center staff was spending time going out there cleaning it up as well. It's just an inappropriate location. That is for tourism, that is for events, we shouldn't be having recycling there. As far as the other one, it was right down the street from the landfill, also abused, and so we ended up just taking those out. We have talked to several municipalities, and actually, for those two specifically, we asked the city of Salisbury, since they were within the city limits, would they be willing to help, and they do not have the manpower. Another one that was causing some issue was Delmar on Foskey, but we actually talked to Mayor Ben Jordan and the commissioners, and they have helped with that, so we're able to keep that open. Our guys were not able to keep up, they were spending a lot of time cleaning up trash and, and not being able to do the recycling, so.
How did Delmar help?
Delmar, they're, they're checking in on it, so if there's things, so they are just coming to check the location, so it's an unmanned location, and so they're coming in and just stopping in and doing rounds, so.
Is that something that the county could, I mean, we have, we have many more resources than Delmar does, isn't that something that the county could do as well?
We do, we do, but what I'm saying is, is that they're just helping out with that. So we are very short-staffed and solid waste, so, I mean, we've been working towards that, so hopefully building that up. But what's happening is, is that when we have a ton of trash there that's not recyclable trash, it's messing up the whole rotation. So like, for example, I just got a call, actually a message from somebody that Pittsfield wasn't picked up, and they had to get right out there to do it, but they were spending too much time cleaning up other recycling centers, so. And you've met with Jen Albaro, too?
Yeah, well, and she came for a session in front of council, too. The, so that's, that's really one of the key things, is so, we'll have a person that have a route of six or seven of these, and then they'll go to one, and they'll be delayed sometimes for, for hours, having to dig through trash that's, that's not recyclable. And like Jen Albaro said, it's specifically the unmanned locations that are, you know, the real tough ones. So food waste, couches, mattresses, you name it, and we get them unfortunately. The, the other, sort of, along this line, and I think we'll probably see this as a ask from, from the landfill during, during budget time, is that right now we have one baleer that does our plastic, that binds it all together so we can sell it. We, in the budget, we may ask for a second one, too. So, because sometimes we get so much plastics that are recyclable, that we sort of get behind in, in doing that, so that might be a budget ask that, that comes next year.
Question, is there actually currently a recycling location in the city of Salisbury?
Well, I mean, there's the, I mean, I mean, there's the landfill itself, so, I mean, they go and recycle, so you can, so at every convenience center, at every convenience center, you can recycle. So, and the city of Salisbury offers recycling to all of their residents.
Yeah, I guess that was the other part that I want to get at, is, is it, should we not, as a policy, just decide to stop accepting plastic? Plastic is not recyclable, basically. It's only 4% of it at any given time can even be recycled.
Yeah.
So we're basically spending a ton of manpower and a ton of effort to basically try to go at something that could be, of which 96% of it is not recyclable. So I don't know if that's a way you might want to, you know, from a, a policy perspective, you could save a whole lot of time and manpower if you just simply stopped accepting recycling. And, and of course, the city of Salisbury puts a lot of time and effort also into collecting, and most of them bins are just plastic, which of course is trash, is going straight into the landfill.
Right.
So would it be worth strictly just cutting out plastic from even being considered as something that is recyclable, since it is basically not recyclable?
It's certainly something we can talk to Jennifer and Steve and see, because I do know we do sell some of our, you know, the plastics that we bale, but that's, yeah, we can have that conversation with.
Apparently milk jugs are the best.
Yes, that's what we hear, milk jugs are.
As long as they're not colored.
And unfortunately, some of the places, you know, you look for the little recyclable symbol, but unfortunately, there are some corporations that put them on things that are totally not recyclable.
Yeah, it's really only ones and twos, but, but every, there's a ton of things that are recyclable.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, cardboard, paper, tin, those things.
So only 4% of.
Plastic is.
Collected is recyclable, 4%.
He said it.
Yeah.
Josh knows.
What's your name? What's your name?
So the other thing that was brought up was the financial reports on the county's website, that they were not current reports. So that has been fixed. Actually, the only reason there was a delay is that our munis upgrade made it very difficult. They were having a hard time communicating with the new munis system. So some of the reports that were generated did not have accurate information at first, so they did not want to put that out. Now those bugs have been worked out, and then everything is now current on the website. So I got that. I was asked about the initiatives for the 2024 General Assembly, two things, which I know one of them is coming up a little bit later on. So we're really focusing on the liquor bills. So as all of you know, we had a liquor task force that was put together for GSC and the Chamber of Commerce, a lot of different stakeholders involved. They have presented their findings to us, and so we have a bill that is being drafted right now. And actually, it'll be hopefully in front of council next, to council meetings. So you guys will see a copy of the bill. It goes along right with their recommendations. And so, and then the next one is the distillery, which I don't want to take their thunder, so they will, you guys will have it in front of you in just a little bit. And the only, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And on the liquor, council vice president, Merritt, now, congratulations, and I were ex officio members of the task force, so I missed one meeting. I don't know that you missed any, I think you were there every time. So I missed, so we were there, you know, I was there a wide majority of the time, he was there every meeting. And there was sort of some agreement early on, and so we met with Mike Dunn and Bill Chambers, who were moderators, and they told us, well, these are the things that it looks like are going to be in this final report, they agree on. The big one would be allowing restaurants, clubs, organizations to buy their liquor outside of the monopoly system, so they could go to a different, you know, vendor. So because we really thought that this report was going to be done, you know, August, September-ish, and we would be able to have it in front of you and then get prefilled. Prefiling deadline was November 1st, so that's a long time ago now. So with their permission, we took that general sketch and went up and met with the bill drafter in Delegate Anderson's office and sort of went through, these are the things that we agreed on as a task force. And we told them, now, look, when this report comes out, if this task force or the county council wants to amend it, then we'll have to amend it, but we want you to get started because the longer you wait, I'm sure Councilman Hastings knows this, the deeper you are in the queue, and we had already missed prefiling. So we went up there and did that, and so that's, that was the key piece where we told them. And liquor law is so complicated that I think even that, doing that one tweak was, it changes the law in like eight different places or something.
Yeah, it is. It was about five different bills that I had to change. The language will completely change that we have a monopoly. There will not be additional liquor licenses. I know that was a concern, there was not additional liquor licenses, I'm going out. This is literally allowing the restaurant owners to be able to buy from whoever they would want, whether it be the county system or not, so. And then the only other part that I really plan to support is all legislation that will look to amend the juvenile justice reform. So any sort of juvenile justice act, I know the sheriff is really involved in that, the state's attorney is really involved, so I do plan to support that.
And at our delegation legislative breakfast, I'm sure you all remember, there were so many stakeholders that brought that up, not just the sheriff's office or school system, several. Juvenile crime is really a hot-button issue in Annapolis, and there is going to be movement on it in some way, hopefully in a positive way.
Okay. The next question was, what is the status of the cells at the landfill, and are you opening a new cell? So if you haven't been by the landfill, you will see that the birds have migrated from the top to now the side. So we have just opened a new cell, cell 10. We closed cell nine, closed meaning no one's dumping up there. There's still some things that have to be done. Besides the current cell, cell 10, we have two additional cells, eight and seven. We are just about to finish construction on cell eight. Cell seven, we have not started the design process yet. As far as the life expectancy of the landfill, when I started this job, we were told about 20 years. That seems to be inaccurate. We have MES looking at the true life expectancy of the landfill. According to some data that we have gotten, this is not 100%, but I would guess we would have less than 10 years. So it's definitely an issue as we move forward. So it's definitely something that is going to be in front of you, you know, probably within the next, you know, part of this term, so. But that's where we are on the landfill, and like I said, once we get that from MES, I'd like to have that conversation with you all.
I was going to throw out, has the administration looked into incineration?
I would love to incinerate. I don't think the state of Maryland would like us to, so. I would, I think incineration would be a great idea. Well, they have it where, Montgomery County still has it, Baltimore City still has it. They have it where it's filtered to the point. So for me, if I would bring three bags of trash, I would rather bury this much ash than three bags of trash. But incineration, I think, would be good for us here on the shore because we, it's not great for us, I mean, it's not great for anybody, but it's really bad for us to bury trash. The Paleo Channel is very close to where we're burying trash, so it's kind of a scary thing, but I would love incineration, but I don't think they would go for it in Annapolis.
And one thing that I know Wayne Strasberg, one of the two issues he's looking to, he's also, I talked to him about anaerobic digestion, so he's looking at that as well. The big thing from the state is diversion that they're pushing, so sort of like, you know, recycling, but also we may need to look at some sort of food waste diversion as well in the future. So Wayne's still, I don't want to step on Wayne's thunder, he's still working on that and what have you, so.
Yeah, there's a couple of other issues with it. Yeah, go ahead.
And they can't actually do that, you could do food waste diversion and mix it with, if you wanted to theoretically, and there are places that are doing it, but with poultry industry, there are areas that are actually using some of the daft waste, what we banned in the county, you know, the other things like that that you could put into anaerobic digestion, so that could actually be a big benefit for us, opportunity.
If you have any literature or any articles you want to send me, please do.
Yeah. The last question that you guys had was the contract with Wayne Strasberg, so what projects? How is the contract being paid, and what's the line item in the budget? So Wayne is working on, he was working on the fire service agreement, we're still kind of with that a little bit. EMS and fire, some long-term solutions with that, and then of course, he is also heading up the SWAT analysis. Landfill, life and expansion, he's working on the five-year strategic plan, and he is paid out of contractual or professional services from the various departments. So right now, he's pulled from the executive, Solid Ways, Public Works, EMS, it's just depending on where he is. So that will come up as contractual services or professional services in the various departments that he's working with.
And him being chair of the SWAT analysis is a volunteer position, so we're not being charged for his hours on it, so.
Right. Yeah.
Let's save someone.
So other than that, just really quick, because I don't want to take up too much time, we started our CBA negotiation, so that will be in front of you, I guess in the spring. We're trying to get that done as soon as possible. Their big focus, obviously, is pay and the retirement system. So those are the two big things, and so we're looking at a couple of different things with them. One of the goals for me, and I know Jeff, or Councilman Merritt, Vice President Merritt, and James, you guys are both very aware of West Side and how vocal they are. We've been working very hard to figure out a West Side task force, so not a commission, but a group of volunteers that want to get together, and they have formulated, they are meeting every single month, they are getting together, they have minutes, it's like a very legit meeting, and they are going through, you know, District Two is, this is nothing against you, it's a very large district, all the way from Sharp Town all the way down to the West Side. So they're very active, and so it's really exciting that they've come together to do that. We secured program open space fund, I'm sorry.
I mean, I missed it. Who is the group and what are they working on?
So it's a West Side task force, so the entire West Side of the county. So looking at the marinas, looking at, you know, Bulkhead Projects, Cove Road, all these different things. So they were very vocal about a lot of different things going on, so we have encouraged them to be part of the solution. And so they are all working together in a collaborative group, and then I meet with them, they meet with their council members to kind of bring forward ideas and things like that for the West Side, to better the West Side of the county.
And these are unincorporated areas.
Yeah, unincorporated areas, volunteer.
Not at Brin Sharp Town or Mardella, but more bi-valve, you know.
Are they working in collaboration with Councilman Merritt?
Yes. Well, they, well, I mean, he's been invited to their meetings.
I haven't heard from him.
Oh, you have? Okay, well, I'll make sure that they reach out. I will make sure that they reach out, because I know that, because you've been to one of their meetings before.
Yeah, I went to one meeting.
Yeah, so I'll make sure that they know. They meet on the, what is it, Steve, is Steve back? Still gone. I think it's the, I want to say it's the second meeting of the month at the West Side Community Center at 6:00. So it's like a monthly meeting, so I'll make sure that you get that information. I'd assumed that Joe had reached out to you, it's Joe Lappin.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
We talking about the West Side, and I know it's down the road, we call it down the road.
Yeah.
But I think we also should need to address issues, and my district is also on the West Side.
Okay. If they want to be part of it.
And I think I will send you my concerns.
Sure.
Apologize for not sending them.
Well, it's not me that's running it, this is a, this is a citizen-led organization.
Well, I'm not even saying that you need to be a part of it.
Okay.
Be a part of that, because I know it's down, they have other issues, I know flooding, ditches, you know, that kind of stuff. But I think that my main concern is homelessness and affordable housing that needs to be addressed, and there's state funds to do affordable housing. And we need, not only the cities addressing it, but us as a county needs to address it because we have these tent cities in the woods, and children are living with their parents in the woods. And I know the Christian Shelter has 31 kids right now in the Christian Shelter, and I know Halo has kids, too. So I think we need down the road to address that because that's, questions around, what are you going to do with the homeless? So even if it's a joint effort between the city and the county to address it together, you know, to see how we can bring some stuff over into the, in the county.
Okay.
We met with the newish head of housing for Salisbury, Mirbota, a few weeks ago, so we met before the election, so we'll follow up with him.
Okay.
And we talked about different things like that, especially affordable housing, so.
I just wanted to say that we secured program open space funding for Pirates Wharf and Witipquin Fishing Pier. We have started, it's actually been going on for, since we've been in office, but Employee of the Month and Department of the Month, so we have been really recognizing our employees. We are still patiently waiting to hear if the new hangar at the airport is still in the budget. Right now, it still is, so it's a $14.3 million ask, it's a huge ask, but it has not been cut yet, so still hopeful with that, with the governor. And the biggest thing that we've been working on that you guys already, or maybe that you don't know about, is just our relationships with the municipal leaders. I think today we met the water and sewer, we met with a couple of the municipalities, and I think it really shows that working relationship with them, and still keeping up with our state and federal relationships, so. Other than that.
Well, there is another thing, so I was on a call with MDOT, and they, yesterday, and then they made this public today, HURs are going to be flat funded this coming year in at least the governor's initial budget. The governor puts out the budget in early January, and then the General Assembly does what they want. So in the initial budget, it's going to be flat funded, so we did find that out.
All right. If there's anything else, let me know.
Yeah, I want to get back to recycling really quick, we skipped on through, and my concern really is, I like to see some type of salvation on these centers that were closed. You know, from my perspective, the key to recycling is convenience, and I think that's why they were called convenience centers. And I think that what we have done is we've taken away the two most convenient centers for a majority of the citizens in Waukesha County. So, you know, I would, I would want to suggest, and I think the last time we had a work session on this matter, when the council was concerned about it, the council expressed an interest in possibly staffing the centers, at least one of the centers, and I felt that it was valuable. I mean, initially, we put cameras up there because we recognized that we needed to address some issues, but I don't think the council would have any objection to trying to invest in the most popular centers that we have out there and with staff, even if it means maybe we have a reduction in hours or however it might be done. But I just really think that we ought to be investing in our most popular convenience centers as opposed to just removing them because we just want to throw our hands up and say people are just, you know, it's getting too difficult. So.
So it's not going to be at the civic center, like, it's not going to be there. So if we can figure out a more, if there's a better centralized location, then I would have no problem with it. But again, it's, I under, we don't have people applying for those jobs, so I understand, like, we have the funding to staff stuff like that, but we don't have people knocking down the doors to man those. So if we can think of a better location potentially, I know you were going to say something, Josh, sorry.
I say, I still do have folks calling me, actually, about that, that are still a little upset, and I still walking down the street, reaching the people. As you know, obviously, right in the middle, dead middle of the city are just huge chunks of the county, so there's a lot of folks who, you know, they're not recycling now, and they're not even trying because they're, you know, it's too far for them to go to the landfill or anything else in their mind. So if there were a centralized location, I mean, the civic center was obviously the primary location for a lot of folks that went there, so.
It's just an inappropriate location.
Sure, if we could find a better spot, I mean, I think that could be very beneficial. You'd have a lot of folks, you'd make a lot of folks happy if you could move in that direction.
Since we own the property near the civic center, over, you know, the parking lot area, maybe put it the far end of that parking lot, that way it would be very close to that same location, but it would be a way, you know, you wouldn't have trash going to the front door of the sewers, and I get that.
Well lit with lots of cameras.
Cameras are difficult, they would have to be, it's difficult because a lot of people, one, will see where the cameras are, but two, as soon as they shine their headlights, you can't see anything, you can't see license plates or anything like that. And the other thing is, too, we were just having this discussion about the fines. So even if they do the license plate, who's fining them? Are we sending the sheriff's office out there to find them? Which is fine, we can do that, you know, so.
And the sheriff, for his part, when we've talked to him multiple times on this, he's on board with fining people who litter or inappropriately mess up the recycling stations. It's just really tough to catch them, you know.
Yeah.
We also, I've heard, have rogue, I guess I'll call them rogue individuals that will go to someone out in the county and say, hey, I will handle your trash, and I'll take it to the landfill if you give me 20 bucks a month or some minimal cost. And then some of these individuals are then dumping that roadside so they don't pay the tipping fee. So that's, we, we're also on the lookout for that happening, too, because we've heard that's happened in the past, and they're also difficult to catch, but we're definitely aware of it and on the lookout for it.
I hear your questions, Constance. Thank you very much.
Great, cool. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next consideration is resolution 167-2023. This is amending the fiscal year 2024 budget for the payout of leave in the amount of $33,380 to a retiring employee in the Human Resources Department. And we have Ms. Donna O'Hare here, Director of Human Resources.
Entertained a motion from council to approve legislation, bill number 167-2023.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions for Ms. O'Hara? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution 167-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next is the submission of an appointment to the Waukesha County Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mr. Bunkula.
Mr. Love.
Good evening, again. So the Planning and Zoning Commission's an advisory board, our body, on planning, zoning, development issues, including rezoning, subdivision, and site plan review. And tonight for reappointment is Mr. Chip DeShiel, who's the chairman, I'm sure you all know him, and he does a great job, so.
Okay, so for your consideration is resolution number 168-2023, confirming the reappointment of Charles R. DeShiel Jr., Esquire, as chairman and member of the Waukesha County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 168-2023.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, is why is it that we appoint as chair this individual? Or I guess, you know, normally, a board will have somebody on it, and you'll have rotations. I don't know if you have any clarity as to why we keep the same chairman again and again year after year? I don't know how long he's been on there, it's probably as long as I can.
Yeah, I don't know, unfortunately. I can, I can get back with you with it, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Typically, as you know, for the health of any organization, including a board, it's good to have turnover, it's good to have change.
He was nominated by the group.
Might be.
And he won his chair.
So, the executive says that he was nominated by the group as the chair, so I-
Not nominated, it was, it was a consensus.
So, if, if, if there was a consensus on the part, do their bylaws, Mr. Lutman, or Mr. Giordano, if you want to come up here, do their bylaws state that the council has to approve that nomination, that recommendation from their board, or? I understand what Josh is saying, either our charter or their bylaws should state the purpose of who appoints the chairperson, and usually, it's the committee.
I don't recall us having that task to-
That's what, I'm just going off of what Lori said.
Did you all vote for Chip to be the new president?
No, most of them missed that meeting, and I haven't missed one in a while, so anyway.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. DeShiel actually stopped by the council office, you know, a few days ago, and just clarified that the resolution mentioned that he would be serving as chairman and member, and he stated that the rules require the city, because this commission also serves the city of Salisbury, as well as the county, both of, you know, those two jurisdictions have to have a resolution stating that he is chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley.
You're welcome.
Should have gone to you first, I know, apologize.
I don't recall us, I mean, I don't have a problem with Mr. DeShiel being chairman, but I don't recall us having a consensus to do that.
That's right. We're going to have to go on that, the most we have is, I haven't checked to see whether the resolution shows any type of data coming from the committee or anything.
It does not.
As backup material.
It does not.
We'll move forward with that. Joe, if you find anything different, you can certainly let us know, and you can abstain if you like. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 168-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lutman.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Any more, right? This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Ms. Campbell, Ms. Campbell?
Or Tal.
Excuse me?
Holly Campbell.
I'm sorry, correct, thank you.
Good evening, Holly Ortel, Wycomico County resident, also Vice President of the Wycomico County Fire Association, and active member with the Pittsville Volunteer Fire Company. The budget that Julie wants to put in, or Madam Executive, wants to put in for the $2 million for Salisbury, for the budget for next year, I don't agree with 100%. I can't see it. I think that she was railroaded. When I watched the meeting, when Salisbury Chief came in and the mayor, you know, the mayor seemed like he almost threatened you all. They say that they won't, if they don't get that $2 million, exactly $2 million, they're not going to run into the county for calls, you know, they will wait their six minutes. You can't do that. You cannot wait. They're going to open themselves up for a heck of a lawsuit, and they will lose. We, as fire companies, the 14 volunteer fire companies with Wycomico County, we are afraid that is going to have a trickle effect and wind up hurting us. If you want to do the $2 million, give them $1 million, and then take that other million and divide it up into 14 stations and give us more money. I mean, we will always take more money. We don't want to take any chances at any of our volunteer companies in Wycomico County of losing any money. We just purchased, you know, a new engine, and we just purchased a new engine, costs $900,000. It's a lot of money, you know, and it's not like we have $900,000 sitting in our bank account to write a check. I am asking you to please consider it very carefully, and do not budge. You know, Salisbury is also saying, well, we have so many more calls. Well, they do, they're a city. But here's the thing, so many times that their medic goes out, whether it's a BLS call or an ALS call, they choose to take their engine on the call. That's how you rack up calls. If we did that, we'd have a ton of calls also, but Salisbury chooses to run their engine. That's not our problem, that's not yours' problem. So, all I'm asking, and I'm asking it for all 14 companies here in Wycomico County, do not pass it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Ortel.